Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our August 14th planning board meeting. Barbara, will you please take the role?
Chairman Curry.
Here.
Ms. Gannon.
Here.
Mr. MacRae.
Here.
Ms. Ravina.
Here.
Mr. Goldenberg.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
And Mr. Zabarda.
Here.
Thank you. First item is our minutes from May 8th, 2019. Any comments on them? Corrections, additions, deletions? No? Make a motion to accept the minutes from May 8th, 2019 as presented?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. First on our agenda is a public hearing for the Steve Wilkinson and Brenda Jones Wetland Project. Before I open the wetland, I mean before I open the public hearing, Sarette or Joe, do you, any comments you want to make?
I would just say, following up, we, as many on the board participated in a site walk. I think the site walk went very well. It is pretty clear what the disturbance is, and it's all in previously disturbed areas where they're going to be building. We talked about treatment of, for mitigation from being in the buffer to provide disproportionate treatment to the new impervious surface that's been added. The applicant has proposed that. I think, you know, there's a little bit of back and forth that I think we still need to do to resolve that, but I've spoken with the, with the engineer, with Mr. Correll, and, you know, and, and there's no concern about resolving that. So, I think that all the conditions that we talked about in the field have been met in concept. Like I said, I think there's still some details that we need to run through to get this totally final, but what you've seen in the field and what we've talked about in the field is what we would ultimately get on this project. One of the key items that we talked about in the field and has been included in our memo this time is the approval process that we talked about, because there's really a two-stage approval. They are going to be installing curtain drains in order to facilitate, which is kind of health department approvals for, for the expansion. So, we want to get, we need to give them approval to go ahead and put the, make the disturbance to put in the curtain drains, pause button, approval from the health department, then come back and get the permit in order to build the addition. And, and we talked about that in the field, and I know that the applicant has no concerns about that. That's the way we have to do it. So, in the end, I think what I just wanted to say is everything we talked about in the field has been agreed to in concept. There's a couple of details that we need to work out, but I'm very confident in my conversations with the applicant, as well as in, in working through this, you know, the details of the project that we'll have everything that we talked about.
Just a simple question about the rain garden. What was final on that? Is it now two rain gardens?
We, right now, it's showing as one, but I think as we work through these details, it, it may get a little bigger, or we may add another means of, because right now, what we talked about in the field was, was treating half of the roof in a rain garden. And then, and, and then there's the new impervious surface, right? So, you know, what we have to work through is, I'd like, ultimately, what I would like to do is to treat the new impervious surface, plus the mitigation being half the roof, and that would go into the rain garden. I think there may be other ways that we could treat around the patio that may not be a rain garden, so I think it might end, I, I think where we'll end up is with the single rain garden, and maybe a different means, like a gravel trench around the impervious area or something like that, that the water would overrun and run into, and it would have the same effect as the rain garden, but there's limitations on how big of a rain garden we can put in, and right now, they're at that limit.
I'm glad to hear that. When you mentioned two rain gardens, it sent me back a little bit.
Yeah, so I think, I think the better approach, frankly, is to, is to use a mechanism that as it's running off of, of the new impervious, that there's a mechanism to treat it right there and then, and we'll, and we'll put the rain, we'll put the rain garden in to handle the, the half the roof, which it's already sized to do right now.
Sarette, do you, any comments? Do you have any comments on what Joe said or anything else?
I just thought our, our agreement as far as the approval was, was there'd be one resolution now.
Yes, a single resolution with two steps.
But you said we'd come, have to come back.
No, 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 that's not what I meant.
Okay, that's all, that's fine.
It's a two-step resolution where, where the resolution will say, you know, you can pull a building permit for the, for the, for this, for the curtain drain, but prior to pulling a building permit for the addition, you need to provide the health department approval.
Yes, I understand.
So, it's a single resolution, two-step process.
Thank you.
What's the matter? You don't want to come back and see us?
Any thought, come back?
And, and any other comments?
No, I don't.
Before I open the public hearing, Barbara, has notice is going out?
The public notice was in the summer's record on August 1st, and let us went out to the neighbors a day or two later.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here like to speak? Any board member comments before we close the public hearing? No? I make a motion, we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have a resolution in front of us. How do you want to do? You want to go through that bit by bit, or does anybody have anything that they saw that they'd like to comment on? No?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I was looking for a copy from the binder, and I don't have it. I know our offices collaborated on it, so I know.
I know.
Yeah, right. I haven't got a copy of the resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah. In my email, I didn't get a chance to look at it, but I don't see a hard copy.
I think you're talking about the Heritage Hills is the resolution. I think it's the Heritage Hills. I don't think we did a resolution on this. We don't have a resolution on this yet.
Oh.
I don't, I don't have any.
What I was, yeah, because I was going to say, when you started saying resolution, I'm like, I don't think we're going on this.
I still haven't got one yet.
So, but, but what I would request.
No, I didn't find a way around.
What I would, what I do think could be appropriate for the board to direct me to prepare a resolution for chairman's signature, so that the applicant does not need to come back in front of the board, and we can get that rectified very quickly. If the board had no concerns of that approach, it's going to be a very straightforward resolution.
Yeah, yep, yeah.
Can we, if you know the number now, can, can we at least, we should vote on that resolution though, shouldn't we?
Do you know what the resolution number would be?
I can't say.
Okay.
It's appropriate, though. We've done it before, where you can, where they can, where they could, the board could have.
The next resolution.
Yeah.
That the board can approve.
Okay. My signature, right. I just wanted, Joe, do we have to, do we have to vote on the resolution, the number, at some point in time?
Well, you mean excluding the number?
Yeah, no?
No.
Okay, it doesn't have to be. Okay, as long as it's.
Resolution dated today.
All right.
Resolution dated today.
Is the board, is the board okay with it being for chairman's signature?
Yes.
Yes.
Very comfortable.
Then I make a motion that we instruct Joe to prepare the resolution for my signature. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would like to say something. And that is, this home is about 42, 43 years old, off the top of my head, in the 40s.
You're not born at 52 years old.
Yeah, got it. There you go, 52 years old. I wish to thank this family. They're longtime residents of, of this town. Mr. Wilkinson grew up in this town. It's an invasion of your privacy when you upgrade your, your home and you discover laws have changed, and all of a sudden, you have us invading your property. And, and, and we're aware of that, and I want to thank you for your graciousness as we bumbled along your lovely property. We enjoyed the fish. I don't mean we ate his fish. We enjoyed how much he loved his home. We loved it, and you're a wonderful gardener. I loved your garden. And I have a request.
That's my wife.
Well, well, maybe what I'm about to say is appropriate. I hope, I personally hope that you or your wife would consider volunteering for one of our committees, especially our open space committee, which cares about the land and the open space and such things, and seriously think of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and actually last on our agenda, is Cobbling Rock Estates. This is an application for proposed, for a proposed nine-lot preliminary subdivision approval, steep slope protection, stormwater management, and erosion and sediment control, and tree removal permits. The construction of two-town roads. The property, for the record, is located south of Cobbling Rock Drive and Dr. Tony's Road, and is located in an R-120 zoning district. Before your presentation, I just wanted to say, Sarette, kudos to you. This is really nice, what you put together for us. Thank you.
Yeah, it was really good.
Sir.
Good evening. Tim Allen, Bebo Associates with me tonight. I just want to introduce our team, and I'm going to back out here. Matthew Gerona is our project engineer and our project manager, who's working on this project. Vito and his son are co-applicants on this, Vito Andriano. You'll remember, Vito built the, the houses up on Palmer Road, also the DeCiana house that you guys all saw. Vito was, built that house also for Mr. DeCiana, so he's, and he, obviously, is summer's resident. As Sarette had put through her memo, which is very eloquent in terms of how, this is the Whitman Trust property, which is part of Cobbling Rock and Dr. Tony's Road. This is only intended to be a further subdivision of that property, of which we're now here before this board. The, the property's been rezoned since it was originally contemplated back in the day, and we've accommodated for that zoning. Certainly, we can look at different alternatives to this project, but tonight, I believe, what we'd like you to do is to declare yourself lead agency and, and schedule a site walk, if you, if you so wish. I'll turn it over to Matt, let him talk about the project, and then, away we go.
Evening, everyone. As Tim mentioned, my name's Matthew Gerona. I'm a civil engineer with Bebo Associates. Tim kind of hit on the key points. Project is nine-lot, single-family residential subdivision. The parcel is approximately 39 acres. It's undeveloped with frontage on Cobbling Rock Drive and Dr. Tony's Road. The subdivision is proposed as a part of this application, proposes the construction of the two-town roads, which would connect to Dr. Tony's and Cobbling Rock Drive. Both roads currently now terminate at what I would describe as a hammerhead intersection, which was designed and laid out to accommodate future road extensions, such as we're doing as a part of this application. As Sarette mentioned in her memo to the board, and as Tim touched on, this parcel was contemplated as a later phase to a subdivision, which was approved in the early 1980s in two sections, known as the land grant subdivision. This parcel was, was again contemplated and identified as to be part of that subdivision, but remained vacant until we come to you here today with this application. The parcel itself is bisected by an existing wetland and water source, which we have laid this subdivision out to avoid any impacts to the wetlands or buffers on the property entirely, minimize steep slope impacts to the greatest extent we practically can. We did have an opportunity to review correspondence from Sarette, as well as the consultant engineer. It's understood that we will need a number of outside agency approvals, and fully intend to pursue them and incorporate any necessary plan revisions with future submissions. And again, as Tim said, we're hopefully here tonight to obtain a lead agency declaration from the board and schedule a site walk, so the application can be considered further, and happy to answer any questions the board has.
What's the difference between the two FEAF files on the USB drive? They, they had slightly different file names. They looked the same. I didn't want to print them up, because that kind of defeats the purpose of going electronic and saving paper, but they look the same. They both had the mapper at the end.
That, one of them, there was, based on our initial submission, I had some conversations with Sarette, and we made some minor revisions to the project description and a couple other questions. If there was an additional file on the USB drive that was probably, should not have been there, it should have been one EAF, we can confirm that for you and clarify that.
Which one was the one we're working off?
Yes.
Because, because to the naked eye, as I'm trying to compare them, I.
Was that on every thumb drive? There was multiple EAFs?
Mine had two. They had very similar names, just a slight variation, and I kept looking at it, but I, you know, it's.
There was only one hard copy distributed? Sarette?
I believe so, but maybe not. I don't know. I, I, our intent was to hold back the original, because within a day or two, you sent me the revised one very quickly. So, there was only supposed to be one EAF.
The revisions were, were minor.
The dates at the end, one should be two days earlier, and then one two days later, because when I looked at the application, there were some things that needed further filling out and correction. Matt and I had a conversation, and within a day or two, he sent the revised one, and that is the one that should have gone out to you.
So, I'll just, just, I'll delete the other one.
Delete the early one, if it's there.
Or I'll make a note and disregard it. Okay.
Any other board member questions or comments?
Yes. Joe, you, you're the engineer. I read your report. I noticed, I understood the English, but not the engineering. So, my question is, it's a nine-lot subdivision, and you singled out, I was looking for my notes, four lots that had some problems that you asked them to prove further. Lot one, I can't remember the numbers of the other three lots. And my understanding, they have.
The stormwater you're talking about, right?
Yeah, right.
The infiltration. I think it was around the infiltration basin demonstration.
Yes, yes, infiltration basin. And, and my basic question to you is, is that going to be hard for them to prove on those four lots, or four, or maybe just some of them? Because I know they have to prove they can do nine, and so are four of them going to be the problem lots for them to prove? Is that?
I don't know that I can characterize it as problem. I think it's just more information that we need in order, in order to be able to determine that the lot can handle the stormwater coming off that individual lot. It's not that I'm concerned that they're not going to be able to address them.
Oh, okay.
There's additional demonstrations that they need to do, and we'll see where that takes us.
Okay.
Now, that's understood. You know, again, this was, this was our initial submission for preliminary subdivision approval and understanding.
I wasn't pinning you down that it wasn't perfect.
No, I mean, if your, if your question was leading towards, do I think that if we were going to go, you know, be doing lot counts, might nine go to, to five?
I'm not ready to, to say that.
Or eight, you know.
I don't think Vito is yet either.
I'm not in any way ready, I don't think we have the information to say that. I would be surprised if that was the case.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
I'd be surprised, only because there are other ways we could treat stormwater from than just infiltration, if, if those demonstrations didn't work.
All right.
I mean, in all honesty, the own, you know, the one item that I, you know, obviously, I've issued a memo. It talks about various things. We need some more information around the stormwater, but the one item that, that to me is something that I do think we need to change on this plan, is the location of one of the basins from the road, that basin back there. You know, I just think it's going to be complicated. Who's going to maintain the access? That access to be free of access, to get back there? I've just seen this happen where, when they get out of sight, out of mind, they get out of sight, out of, out of mind, and then they get overgrown. I would prefer if we could get that closer to the, to the road, so that it would be easier for the town to maintain. Now, if for elevational reasons, that just isn't going to work for you, I think we might have to be really talking about that access easement and make sure that it remains passable, so, because that.
That was, that was sort of my thought on it, and.
Do you flip it, just, just turn it a little bit this way? Just a scoach. That's great, thank you, so the camera can still see it, but that, that helps, thank you.
So.
Wow.
As you can see on the constraints map, lot one is constrained by a section of slopes between 15 and 25 percent, which according to the stormwater manual, as Joe knows, is not a suitable area for an infiltration basin. Obviously, the intention is to capture runoff from all proposed impervious surfaces, obviously, number one being the road, so at this point, we can install some drainage at our connection and pipe down to an infiltration basin, where we did complete some stormwater testing preliminarily and found suitable soils. I agree wholeheartedly that, you know, we do need to, you know, maybe show something additional to maintain that path as accessible for maintenance of that basin and.
Right, and also, there is some area that's up by the road that's a little spotty with some 25 percent, but, you know.
Well, so this would be the septic area for lot one.
That's what I'm saying. What if you flip-flop those, and you put the septic, you know, put, put the, the stormwater basin close to the road, and put the septic in the back, so that it's easier to maintain? Just take a look at it.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're going to explore some options, because I'd agree. You know, if there's a way to keep that less out of sight, out of mind, from a maintenance standpoint, I think that's the better thing to do.
I mean, we just dealt with it on the part, and all of a sudden, it's like, well, we have an easement. Well, how are we going to get through that? You put a fence on it now, there's trees growing on it. So, luckily, they were able to, they allowed Tommy to pass through their property and not over the easement to fix the basin. I just don't have to deal with.
No, understood. I mean, I will say this, you know, just by the nature of constructing this drainage pipe and intermittent manholes to get down to this basin, this access road will be almost built during construction, but we could certainly improve that and certainly provide some language.
And over time, I would just, if, if in the end, we end up with a scenario where it has to be like this, I think that we would have to include provisions that would say, upon request, if the highway superintendent will needs it cleared, that the owner will bear the cost of clearing it, because ten, that may be the case tomorrow, when Vito's done with it.
Well, if it's an easement over their property, then I agree.
But four years after that, you know, the trees will be growing, and Tommy won't be able to get in there. And, and, you know, I would want him to have a trigger to be able to say, hey homeowner, per your agreement, you got to clear me my access. I'm coming in, you know, in a month. Please get that done for me, right?
Sure.
I think we could avoid all that if we can just put it, if we can flip-flop those areas and put it up by the road.
It's certainly something we can look at.
Okay. That's really my, you know, my, 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 you know, one of my, probably my biggest concern on this, and I, relatively minor, but I think it's a pretty, is the item that I want to make sure we address.
I have a question. Since we, the whole area is 28, it was R-80, and now we're designing a one, a R-120. Once we prove that all the lots are viable on our, on the sketch, can't we tighten up some of the lots and maybe move that, you know, basin up the hill and, you know, not disturb so much of the site? I mean, why do we have to create all these lots that are 3, 5 acres, 4 acres?
We, we have the right to request that you cluster.
Yeah, well.
Just tighten up, you'd be more environmentally friendly.
For those reasons.
Yeah.
You know, under your force.
That's what Sarette.
There's a procedure for doing that, called conservation subdivisions, whether or not, you know.
Well, I'm a builder, and I mean.
Okay, and, and. Tim is smiling over there. I'm not sure he would advise you to go that route.
Right, we did discuss this, and, and, you know, obviously, to proceed down that route, if that is where we end up, you know, we have to prove the conventional subdivision first, which is what we're here for tonight, and we have obviously a lot of engineering items that we have to pursue with a number of outside agencies, and that may be a scenario where we end up at the end of the day. I just think it's a little premature to start discussing conservation subdivision at this point with the board.
Yes.
And, I think.
But, 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 but Vito, that is always an option when we get to that point, is, is you, we could do the lot count based on this. It gets proved out, you've got your lot count, and then we figure out a way to cluster those in a way to be environmentally protected. That's what the open space committee has requested, but I agree with, that we have a number of steps to get to before we can start that conversation.
Yeah.
All right. Go right to the chase.
Um, any other board member comments or questions?
Yeah, will there be any need for getting rid of rock, you know, blasting, or however?
I think there will be some rock excavation incidental to the development of the property. You know, we did preliminary testing throughout for stormwater and septic, and actually, I would say 95 percent of our holes, we didn't hit rock till seven feet. So, my initial walk of the property, I expected to find more, but based on our testing, we actually did not find what I initially expected. I don't expect anything beyond typical rock excavation, mechanical excavation equipment to remove that rock. I don't know, maybe you envisioned something different, Vito, but.
There's some areas on the left side of that map that's a little hard. The right hand, the right side of that map is all banked, as far as you can dig.
Yes.
So, there's, you know, there's rock there, but that rock is all embedded with banked, so you can work around the rock.
You can just, no blasting.
I don't think they blasted, and then they built Cobbling Rock or Dr. Tony's.
No, no. Hammers, but no blasting.
No, no blasting.
Yeah, because we'll probably move in a direction of an approval with no blasting, I would imagine, right? So.
Why is that anyway?
And we, we try not to, only, only go blasting if we have to. If you can chip rock in a week, why, you know, blast? Because then people worry about its impact on their properties, and it just becomes, all the monitoring required. I think it's much easier to chip unless, it was going to be like, well, I can chip for three months, or I can blast for three days, and I think that that's when the board would start thinking about, well, let's blast for three days and do the controls, as opposed to chip for six months, and hear people complain about that.
And check, check neighbors' foundations before and after.
That's the reason I raised the question.
I mean, I will say that the roads lay out on the site pretty good, where they're fairly balanced, cut and fill, and not a lot of excessive cuts.
And there's not a lot of grading in general. I mean, the, the subdivision does lay out very nicely. I mean, if you look around these houses, there's not a lot of grading required on the, around these homes, so I think it's laid out very well.
We're going to do a site walk, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, any, any other questions, comments? Sarette, do you have any comments you want to make? We have your memo. So, let's try to do two things tonight. Let's declare ourselves to be lead agency, and then, everybody comfortable with setting a date for a site walk?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that we declare ourselves lead agency under CECL.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's try to pick some dates.
There's a lot of site. I said, there's a lot of site.
Yeah, it's a lot of site, yeah. You have little, little vehicle, little vehicles for us to drive around?
No, there's actually carriage trails.
There is a lot of.
Oh, okay.
Pretty walkable.
Okay.
My son, we grew up there, so he had plenty quad trails.
Don't put that on record.
Can you get the, can you get the driveway staked out?
Yes, absolutely. If you would stake out the center line of road.
The roadway, and, and I would say, what would we want, would we want four, four corners of each house, or one on each side of the house?
Yeah, or maybe, what do you, what do you think in ballpark on square footage on the houses?
Well, the first floor, probably, I would say 2,000.
Do we need four corners, or do you just need?
I think if you gave a, I think if you gave a center point of the home.
A center stake of the house, yeah.
Yeah, center stake, yeah, center stake would be fine.
That's, that's realistic, isn't it, to ask?
Center stake in the center line of the road.
Yeah.
Center point falls.
What do you want? Couple of weeks to do this? Are you, tell, tell me, board members, when you want to go?
And then state what intersection we're meeting at. Which one?
Probably easier to walk, start at Dr. Tony's, or you want to start at Cobbling Rock?
Both easy.
They're both easy.
Dr. Tony's flatter.
Yeah, Dr. Tony's is probably better. Might be a little bit easier for parking, too.
The other side's great, the other side's prettier.
Well, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to walk through the whole place. Uh, Dr. Tony's.
Okay, Dr. Tony's.
So, Barbara, you can put that in the memo, I mean, you know, a, a email to us, please. Dates, I'm throwing out dates, what do you?
How much time do you think you need to get it staked?
A couple of weeks is more than enough time.
Two weeks, or if we said somewhere out two weeks beyond?
Yeah, that's.
Does that take us into Labor Day?
I think that takes us into the beginning of the.
How about the first weekend after Labor Day?
Which is what?
September 8th.
Seven, Saturday the seventh.
Saturday the seventh.
Okay.
9:00 AM.
For you all?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly, we could certainly get it staked out in the next week or so, if flagged out, if.
Would you want to do it the Saturday before Labor Day?
That's what, the 24th?
24th.
I know I'm not around.
August 24th.
I'm dropping my son, my, my youngest kid off of college, you know, and we're going to stay up in Plattsburgh that day. It's my anniversary, so I'm not going to be back on the 24th. I can send somebody to walk with you, but I just won't be around on the 24th.
Send somebody.
Okay.
How could you possibly send somebody up to Plattsburgh?
No, send somebody to the site visit.
How they going to get through the winter?
I could have Jen come. I mean, Jen's doing the majority of the reviews on this anyway.
Your son is going to Plattsburgh. Will you tell him in the winter not to walk across the rivers?
Okay.
Not to go outside. So, 24th, we'll meet at the start of Dr. Tony's Road?
Or the end.
No, the 24th.
At the end?
Wait, the 24th or the 31st you want to, actually, the 24th is, yeah, that's next, next weekend.
It's 10 days.
You can have it ready?
10 days from today.
Because then the following Saturday is the Labor Day weekend.
Right. Right.
Which we have to...
So, then, yeah, yeah, we'll make it happen. August 24th, what time?
9:00.
9:00 AM.
9:00.
The end of Tony's...
End of Tony's Road.
Barbara, you got that?
It's just pretty...
9 o'clock on the 24th.
Yeah.
Saturday, 8:24 AM.
Yeah.
So, you'll have fun if you go over there.
Good for me.
Going to start a couple of foundations between now and then?
We need the economy to change a little, no?
Yeah.
That's unfortunate, but it is what it is.
Can I ask Tim a question?
No. Yes.
Tim, isn't this estate, this family directly go back and is related to the original owner of...
Yes, it was the Whitman estate, which is the landlord.
Yeah, so, I don't know if you know, the Whitmans actually used to own what is now as their park.
Right, right.
And then they owned from the apple orchard hill to all the Van Metselier, I mean, I've known Mrs. Whitman since I was 14 years old.
No, that's not what I meant.
No, no, no.
I meant the family. The family line goes back to the original owners of Van Cortlandt.
Right, exactly.
Oh, really?
Van Renselier, and Whitman.
Yeah.
And it was called the land grant because they were Dutch settlers, and they were given all of that property that is now last in park, as long as they would produce, you know, fruit or vegetable, and it was a huge, tremendous apple orchard. When I was a kid growing, I moved here in 1970, it was all apple orchards. Now, it's all lawn, but...
And in essence, this subdivision is the last subdivision going back to that family. That's what I'm thinking, my head.
Yeah, it was the Hoffins and the Whitmans.
Yeah, Hoffins.
And then the Hoffins became the mustard farm.
Yeah.
And this became last, last...
That's right, the Lastons bought it from Dr. Tony.
A lot of generous people in the history of Somers, because he had Rees, right, for that as well, a lot of nice donations to, to open space.
I saw Mrs. Whitman last night. She's a very interesting person.
Yes, I bet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
CNN 24th.
I haven't seen you in 10 years.
Oh, cut it out.
You look fantastic.
Thank you.
I haven't seen you in a long time.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. See you later, Vito. I'll let you know on...
Actually, just take a look at the, if you think this out, okay?
Just so everybody knows, Vito and I used to both be heavily involved in the youth sports baseball program, so that's why, we're talking about the, the batting cages, so...
Does that mean you have to recuse yourself?
They're falling into disrepair, and, and he wants me to go take a look at it, so I just wanted to make sure the board knew what we were talking about, that it was...
Does that mean you have to recuse yourself?
That's why I wanted to make sure I was crystal clear of what I was talking to him about.
Now, it's home run baseball, it's all garden.
Yeah.
Anyway, good night now.
Good night. We threw one last thing on here. If anybody's interested in just any discussing of the meeting concerning a private school, anybody want to throw anything out, ask questions, anything, just through here, because I knew, I was pretty sure this is going to be a short meeting, and if not, then we'll adjourn.
Okay.
A, just a question. I know we were talking, we were talking before about sidewalks and like, again, being relatively new to the board, is, is there a community of...
Benefit package.
Benefit package that, that goes along with developments like this? Is that something, it's arbitrary or mandatory, or how does that work?
I wouldn't say it's mandatory. I would say that there are conditions that tend to trigger it, right? In this instance, I, there are some other items that might be more important to the town than a community benefit package relative to historic tax issues. I know that there's, I don't know all the details of it, but when I asked the same question, I got a response that says, there's other things that may be more valuable to the town.
Than sidewalks?
Than the sidewalk.
Yes, yes.
Oh, whoa, I, I definitely agree with that. I wasn't even talking about sidewalks.
Oh, okay, no, no, the community benefit package, yeah, it's not a mandate, it is a thing that, for example, if somebody's asking for, it's a negotiation, really. If somebody's asking for big zone changes, and they want a lot, we want a lot, too, and that's usually how that goes, right? It usually is a give and take.
Yeah, it's usually a sum of money.
Well, the best example is Gus Maniello's.
Right.
In exchange for being a condominium.
He put sidewalks.
Put the sidewalks.
As opposed to, and it would have been fee simple, which would have made the taxes on those units significantly higher, and he thought that that would be difficult for him to sell them, so the town agreed to allow him to, you know, to agree to approve his condo if he put all the sidewalks in town, right? So, those are, those are the instances where, where it comes to the give and take. It's not a pro forma that we automatically get a community benefits package in. I thought you were going sidewalks, and in this instance, I know that there are other benefits for this moving forward that go beyond physical infrastructure.
No, my, my, my personal opinion is, I, I don't want to go for the sidewalks. I think the town could use other benefits besides sidewalks. I know I have disagreement on the board with some people, but anyway.
What I, what I will report out to the board is, because sidewalks did come up at the, at the hearing.
No, I know. I wanted to, I want to put that on record, that there were, at the public meeting, there were several town residents that had voiced their favor for sidewalks to be incorporated in this project to connect the Metro North, so...
And since, yeah, and since then, what I will inform the board is, I was contacted